Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting for Monday, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We will begin with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Lehman, Maher, Roberts, Stroman, Pettigrew, Seacris, Beberdorff, Tamang, Evans. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Uh, thank you. Next we'll have an invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. I believe Greg Blanc is here for the invocation. So if you're able and willing, would you please rise?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Thank you for your service. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we open this meeting inviting your presence in this room. Your desires that everyone would know your affection and your tender touch. We're thankful that you love the people of Rapid City and want what's best for us. We ask that you would give us leaders who would honor you. You have gifted these servants with the wisdom to deal with the pressures of budgets and personnel issues and ordinances, policies, and so much more. Let them know that they can seek your guidance and cast their cares on you as they make decisions that impact many, many people. Father, it's our desire that you would bless Mayor Solomon, these council members, the other city officials here, and their families as they serve the great people of Rapid City. To God Almighty be the glory. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion by Evans, second by Roberts. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we're beginning tonight with a special presentation from Black Hills Works and um, we have Brad Sadoff, CEO of that organization. Brad, floor is yours.
Hello. Hey, thanks for having me. Appreciate it and appreciate Bill Evans on working to arrange this. Bill and I got to sit next to each other at an Elevate Artificial Intelligence Learning Session and I think Bill's the resident expert on AI on the council. I'm pretty sure right now. We earned a lot. But um, appreciate the invitation to come here and and talk a little bit about what Black Hills Works does, who we are and um, just celebrate uh, our partnership out there. Black Hills Works, we've uh, been around for sixty-eight years in Black Hill, in the Rapid City community. We serve over five hundred adults with developmental and intellectual disabilities that are citizens of Rapid City and we do that with a workforce of about five hundred and fifty staff. Our role is really to help people with developmental and intellectual disabilities live in their community, in our community, rather than uh, institutional services, nursing home services, or out-of-state placements, things like that. We we take seriously our role to uh, help support families and keep families together within our community by by partnering with them and um, uh, providing supports for people to live community-based lives. Over with what we do, serving adults with disabilities, it can be kind of easy. It can happen where folks can be marginalized. It's a population we don't want to be marginalized and we want to support them to be participating, active members of our community. And in order to do that, we need opportunities and partners that are much greater than just what Black Hills Works can provide on our own. We need businesses, entities like the city to be able to provide both employment opportunities, volunteer opportunities, plus so much more with the city of Rapid City, which I'll talk about in a minute. I do want to recognize Daryl Shoemaker. I don't, you hide him back in the closet right now? Yeah. Daryl Shoemaker served on our board of directors for uh, a couple of full terms until very, very recently. So we appreciate his service and one example of uh, how we work together with the city. But anyway, um, we, I'll start with the mayor's office. Uh, Mayor Solomon has been uh, a a real treat to work with, a real blessing for Black Hills Works, and participates with the work that we do. You see pictures of him with folks that we support where he had uh, the mayor has attended our gala, issued proclamations in support of the work that Black Hills Works, as well as having individuals we support come into his office and uh, learn a little bit about what he does and and to see city government. He also helps facilitate our participation on the Rapid City Disability Awareness and Accessibility Committee, which does really, really important work that um, we feel honored to be participants in. Um, and the mayor was also recipient of Black Hills Works People's Choice Award for his support for people with disabilities. So uh, we appreciate your championing, champi-ee-ing there. The Parks and Rec Public Works Grants Division and Planning Division, these these groups worked, have been working with us recently. There you see them in our boardroom, helping to do planning around the legacy trail system that we're working with many partners to help create for our city. Where we can and where we have opportunities, we want to be able to share the resources that we have with our entire community. And in this case, that includes some land placed over on our Range Road area where we we kind of land between three trail systems that are all separated, but um, you know, want to be able to work to participate in helping to be a connector of all three of those trail systems. And uh, in a project that can both positively impact people with disabilities that we serve, but the entire community at large on it. So we appreciate, we appreciate the work of all those communities coming together and helping us try to make something marvelous happen there. Um, City Grants Division, you know, we being a nonprofit, we're out there trying to work all avenues for the funding to do the important work that we do. And we really appreciate the work that Jamie with the Grants Division does to help pitch grant opportunities our way, which we work really hard to take advantage of. And Michelle Shoki, um, and helping both obtain and work with Community Development Block Grant Funds. Um, on here you see a sign for a new eight-plex that is in the process of being built, come along real good, that used uh, Community Development Block Grant monies to help with the completion of. This project will, when it's completed, will provide some really awesome housing for people that use wheelchairs, the big power wheelchairs, that so often are hard to find really good accessible and affordable housing for. I would say that population struggles more to find those good opportunities more than the general population at large. But with the city's help, we're going to make something happen there um, and and increase good housing opportunities. Uh, Parks and Recreation have had a great partner with it uh, with that division for some time. We appreciate employment opportunities as people uh, that we support work to help take care of our parks, uh, restrooms, keep them in good shape. And here you see some uh, fairly new work we've taken, volunteer work we've taken on where we worked, met with the Parks and Rec Department to find, hey, where are there needs that the city has and where can we meet up with opportunities? We're looking for people with disabilities to participate in. And helping with the maintenance of that really uh, highly visible area over at Memorial Park uh, came about as an opportunity and uh, I think working out just wonderfully uh, as volunteer work for people to do and helping contribute back to our city in really, really important ways. Uh, the Public Works Department, here you see a couple of pictures. One of them uh, involves artists from our Susie Kappa Art Center painting the snowplow blades because why not put a little joy on those snow snowplow blades out there, um, and helping have a little contest around that. And then also, if you notice how spiffy those fire hydrants look throughout Rapid City. Uh, volunteer crews from Black Hills Works have gone around it. I don't know how many have painted, they painted, but a lot of them. Uh, keeping those fire hydrants uh, nice and shiny and in good shape. Great, great volunteer work and a way for people to contribute, be participating members in our community. Um, the Police Department, um, we've, you know, when you talk, you talk about law enforcement, public safety, and sometimes that can be intimidating for folks with developmental disabilities and even scary at times, especially when you get sirens blaring. Sirens can be scary, but Sergeant Doyle uh, for some time has done a marvelous, phenomenal job in helping uh, have educational meetings, educational sessions, coming around, seeing participants, bringing, even bringing donuts and barbecue and things like that. Uh, to help folks see people in uniforms and know that sirens aren't always a bad thing and uh, just help understand the the role that the police uh, uh, perform in our community. And during our gala, Chief Hedrick agreed to get auctioned off. He's a really big deal, I guess. You're a really, really big deal. Uh, delivering donuts. So we appreciate his willingness to uh, participate there. Good job, chief. Um, Fire Department, uh, some really, really cool stuff of employment for people with disabilities, helping to keep the the fire stations nice and shiny and, oh my gosh, hearing the stories about how the folks love those jobs just really it brings a smile to my face and I think really huh, just a great, great example of win-win all the way around there. But anyway, we've got all this great stuff going with the city. We we don't want it to be in secret because we appreciate so much uh, the partnerships and the opportunities that we've had uh, over the years and also want to, you know, throw out there that we, we with, we serve a large amount of people and we need a large amount of opportunities. And we need all partners in our community, businesses, nonprofits, cities, governments, uh, to help work with us to provide those opportunities out there. That as the city's doing planning and, you know, finding areas of need that may be struggling to meet, we want to invite uh, we would like to invite you to sit down with a conversation to see if, where, how, we could possibly be solution in those, whether it be providing more employees for the city, uh, whether it be folks that are employed directly by the city, or whether it be on things like work crews that's done through a contract where we can help mitigate some of the concerns of insurance and things like that out there. But, you know, we have the ability to come in with job coaches or uh, direct support staff to help make sure that uh, people with disabilities are doing what's needed, the qualities there, that it works for everybody out there. And just want to invite as, you know, as conversations to help find as many opportunities we possibly can out there. Uh, we are not exhausted yet on opportunities that we're looking for. Um, and then volunteers, you know, all, you know, we want to help people with disabilities experience the dignity of work. Um, and my belief that's the highest purpose of work is that dignity one gets towards contributing to something meaningful. And that dignity with work can be both through paid jobs, but and it can also be achieved through volunteer work also. And we do have a lot of uh, folks that we serve that are looking for volunteer opportunities, things like those fire hydrant work that boy, people, those are grand slams and the more grand slams we can help make happen in partnership with the city, we are absolutely open uh, wanting to take advantage of to be solutions for both you, all of the, all of the departments out there and help be, you know, provide that opportunity platform for really, really valuable uh, citizens that we have disabilities. So thank you. I think I kept it under the ten minutes.
All right. Thank you, Brad. We appreciate the good work uh, Black Hills Works is doing. Counselor Evans would like to make a few comments.
You know, when I sat down at that table, we got into a small group and Mr. Sadoff was there. I've never met him before. You can instantly tell when there's a person who's a poser or a doer. And I could tell right off the bat, this is a guy we need to work closer with, more closely with. You can just tell that he generates goodness and things that wouldn't be happening if he wasn't in that position. And for those who do not cherish the Black Hills Works and the Susie Kappa Center, you have to be aware that those two facilities are really world-class. And here in Rapid City, we have something going on that many cities have none of. And so we are blessed by the vision of the people that put these together many, many years ago and that they're being continued on by people that continue that vision. So I just want to congratulate what they do. And I see a great opportunity. We're trying to talk about downtown beautification and things like this. I see a great opportunity to work with you guys on that and also put your clients out so they interact with citizens and it could be a win-win for everybody. So thanks for this presentation. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. That'll take us to our general public comment. This is time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. I do have a handful, quite a few speaker request forms. Uh, just as a reminder, it's a three-minute timer. Uh, you'll see the uh, timer right above us here and at thirty seconds left to go, you'll see the yellow kind of giving you that indication. What I'm going to do is I'll say a name and then I'll let the person who's on deck, let, let them know that they're on deck as well. We're going to start with James Bialata and uh, followed by Annalise Bialata. So, James? Give you a minute. Oh, is that what he's saying? Okay. She could go first. She can go first, James. All right. So Annalise, you, Bialata, you're up first. James, you're following her. Hi there.
Hello. I'm here to talk about the Police Department. Uh, they've had some very almost disgusting issues. Uh, Officer Gonzalez made a incorrect police report regarding an incident which on body camera shows the errors made. And it wasn't just small errors of maybe a miswording, but saying witnesses claimed complete wrong testimony to him. And then when that was brought up in court, uh, Sergeant Jeff Alexander told him to rewrite his report in which that was denied to me. And within that report, he changed his report using the body cam and was advised to re-watch the body camera before rewriting it when the initial port was made on scene. And then was making irrelevant comments within that new report. And then when Jeff Alexander was then subpoenaed to be there to be axed, like why was it needed to be rewritten? Why was it advised? My father served him his subpoena because I'm not able to do that myself in my own court case. And within the courtroom, before court was in session, Jeff Alexander threatened to arrest my father for him being served while Sergeant Alexander was in uniform. Thank you.
Uh, next up, James, followed by Taffy Howard.
Thank you for your time. What my daughter just outlined were two criminal offenses. One, evidence tampering. With a valid police report on file, a sergeant asked to have the report changed. And why? Because only in court documents, when my daughter challenged the false report, did they decide to say, oh, God, we better go fix that. That was too late. They were falsely prosecuting my daughter because of my name. Then, just so you know, intimidating a seventeen-year-old girl in court is witness tampering and it's a ten-year felony. Hendricks, have him arrested immediately because if I see him, I will. He committed a felony offense in my presence with multiple witnesses, and I'll get you a list. Not only that, let's talk about everything else that I've been targeted with. Your officers got caught on body cameras stating the city or the police wrote a written memorandum about me for doing this, complaining at City Hall. That is a violation of my right to petition, my freedom of speech. What is going on? Right before council started, Mayor Solomon was served notice of intention to sue. You'll be happy to know that every city council member who was warned of the retaliatory tactics of your law enforcement in January is now being added to the lawsuit. Because you were warned and you did nothing. My daughter's false ticket shows how they immediately retaliated against her for the false crime because I came here to complain that they're getting caught breaking the law. How dare I report dirty cops committing felonies? So let's go have me arrested, right? That's what they've done multiple times. I'm beating the state five to zero on your false charges. Either I'm the best paralegal in this country or every case you're throwing up is garbage. Every single one. They got a false warrant. Detective Morgan Salina perjured a warrant. The judge threw it out. And since my time's short, let me get to the point. Hendricks, RCPD. Notice of trespass. Not a single RCPD employee is allowed on any of my properties. Anything with a Bialata name on it is owned by my family. If you're caught on my properties, you'll be subject to arrest. I trespassed three cops off my front steps. You know what they did? They kept following me up to the front door, picked me up and threw me into the ground.
Time's up, Mr. Bialata.
So is yours.
Next up, Taffy Howard, uh, followed by William Wagner.
Good evening. Taffy Howard here to talk about TIFs again. TIFs, as you know, I believe by their very nature, pad the pockets of developers at taxpayer expense. When they're not abused, they may have a legitimate purpose. Now I'm going to share some information and statistics with you. The first six years that Rapid City allowed TIFs, four of twelve were passed and completed. That's thirty-three percent. In the most recent six years, sixteen of seventeen were passed for a ninety-four percent approval rate. Studies have shown many TIFs are ineffective and a majority of the projects would probably have happened even without the TIF. And then if we had time, we could talk about all the businesses that have received TIFs from Rapid City that are no longer in business or no longer in Rapid City. As you know, you'll be reconsidering the Liberty Land and Catalyst TIFs. Liberty Land is a hundred and twenty-five million and now that there's an actual plan for Catalyst, it is the largest in the city's history at a hundred and thirty-two million. Compare the costs of these to the Marshall Heights at nine million, Innovation Corridor around two and a half million, or the Innen Housing TIF at eight million, and so on. For Liberty Land, I've yet to find one single person who actually wants the project itself, much less the hundred and twenty-five million dollar tip that's attached to it. I want everyone to please look up the project plan for this TIF. There's only seventeen million in capital costs. Where does the rest of the hundred and twenty-five million go? Almost fifty million is discretionary funds. They can be used for pretty much anything, including, quote, "the development of the commercial and entertainment zone." I guess taxpayers are paying for roller coasters and other rides and shops, or perhaps worse, quote, "amenities of the resort village." Over fifty-four million is for finance costs. The staff report states the developer is self-financing. So are they having the taxpayers pay them seven and a half percent interest on their own money? And then there's Catalyst. The cost for Catalyst has ballooned from an estimate of fifty-five million up to a hundred and thirty-two million. But we still don't know who the mysterious, quote, "significant industrial client" is. Is it a data center? What is this four-hundred-million-dollar project? Between those two TIFs, that's more than a quarter of a billion dollars. And if these two pass, they will more than, almost double the value of the twenty-plus active TIFs in Rapid City. I believe Rapid City is sadly abusing the TIF process and the taxpayers, as well as the county in particular, should be upset as they are losing out on taxes for assessed value of seven hundred million per the Department of Revenue. That's a hundred and forty million more than the next closest county, Minnehaha. The citizens I've spoken to would like you to focus on taking care of what you're already responsible for. Fire, police, streets, parks, not adding to the burden with items they've not asked for. Please vote no on both of these when they come back to you. Thank you.
All right. Next up, William Wagner. Please hold your applause. William Wagner, followed by Julie Mueller.
Good evening, everyone. I'm William Shawn Wagner. Sorry I had to serve y'all here, but Rapid City Journal would not call me back and our court date's September tenth at eleven AM. Everyone knows how to tell time, but not everybody knows what time it is. Well, it's time to get to business and I'm talking to our leaders in the, in the community that we need to start paying attention and educating ourselves. Freedom comes with a lot of responsibilities, responsibilities that we've been distracted from. That is why I'm here today to start a cornerstone example of our local leaders of the community. I'm passionate for the homeless because at thirteen years old, I was homeless. I didn't have no one to run to or agency to go to. I feel for the people who are suffering from addiction. I too suffered from addiction as a young kid, then from two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen. The VA had me on thirty-five opiates and barbiturates a day, not including mental health meds. I beat that too. I'm enthusiastic to help our I'm enthusiastic to help our community to scaffold each other, educating each other, pushing each other to be accountable and conducting life with integrity. The Rapid City Journal will not call me back after four calls, so I had to do what I had to do and bring it to y'all. I checked to make sure if it was all right, and I exhausted all my avenues, so that's why I had it come that way. That's why I serve seven out of nine of y'all government officers, the court papers. We have a court date on September tenth, like I said. You know, we've been actively contesting each other since eight twenty-eight of two thousand twenty-two, the special session when Mayor Allender sat right there, and I brought up Article twelve subsection three expenditures and contracts. The next day, in the newspaper Rapid City Journal, eight twenty-nine of two thousand twenty-two, he said, "I'm not running next election." I was here for city manager, I was here for F3 Go Drilling, and plus that raise. He's not here no more. When y'all put in public notice, you would get a raise on July first of two thousand twenty-six. I was fine with it. Then when I saw that, not only knowing it is illegal since Mayor Allender, I saw how y'all use the ignorance of the people and all the local distractions to your advantage to amend a city code which does not overwrite South Dakota Constitution. You know, Home Rule Law or Dillon's Law, it all stems to, y'all cannot amend a constitutional codified law, okay? I'm not here on my own accord. I'm here because Yahweh gave me this assignment. He also gave me the knowledge and the wisdom to watch this whole scenario come to fruition, three years in total. So I've been here. I've been watching, while actively helping thousands of veterans and civilians of the Rapid City Black Hills area.
Mr. Wagner, time's up.
Yep, thank you.
Julie Mueller, followed by Karen McNeil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, I am Julie Mueller, from Rapid City, and I came to the meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I was disappointed in a lot of the votes on the TIFs that were approved. I am encouraging you guys to really look into the details on the Catalyst one and the Liberty Land one. Hundred and twenty-five million and one hundred and thirty-two million? Really? I mean, property taxes are the biggest problem. We've talked about this. The whole city talks about, the whole state talks about property taxes. And yet you guys are so excited about some of this stuff. You want to go ahead and pass it. And in my opinion, these people, if they want to come here, they can pay for it. And passing the one that you did on the three restaurants, those are like two-billion-dollar-a-year businesses. Why are we paying for them to come here? People should be wanting to come here. And when you have an idea, you find your own investors, and you put your own blood, sweat, and tears in it. You don't put our money into it. We don't get anything out of it. Is anybody going to give you guys a discount at Chick-fil-A if you go there? I don't think so. So, anyway, I just want you to know to really take this stuff seriously. Because we are, and I talked to a couple of gals today. I had to go to the eye doctor, but none of them even knew what was going on. They're counting on you guys to represent them. They're blindly trusting and not getting involved because they're sure that you guys are going to, everybody's going to do the right thing everywhere. It just doesn't work that way. We have to get involved. We have to come. We have to talk to you. We have to let you know we're paying attention. And I do want to say, I appreciated Rod Pettigrew at the last meeting, when he actually suggested, before you guys gave the land away for the scouts, that you actually get an estimate on the valuation of the land. Because, but everybody felt like they should have the land, so it passed. But you guys, in my opinion, didn't do your due diligence, because you should have gotten appraisal on it, because you don't know if that land now and that property will be sold in the next month. And you kind of gave our money away without doing what was requested of Councilman Pettigrew. And, you know, I just, I would really, I really would like you to take us taxpayers and put us in the forefront of your mind. And please think about us. And please don't keep adding more good ideas or more fun things on our backs. Because at some point, it's got to stop. And like I had said a couple of weeks ago, the legislature is looking at it, because TIFs are being abused. And please, please, represent us, not developers or other people from out of state. Thank you.
Next up, Karen McNeil. So we can't have applause, I'm sorry. You can clap internally, I suppose, but Karen McNeil, followed by Lois Ward.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Karen McNeil, and my family has lived in this area for well over a hundred years, so I'm very familiar with the town. And I'm here to talk about the TIFs. And to be honest, I didn't even know about this issue until recently. And I just have been researching it and understanding it a little more. And what I understand is that the original intent of TIFs was to clean up blighted areas. And that has morphed into something totally against what the original idea was. And as you all know, this area is a very seasonal business. And there have been several failed establishments, and I'll mention them, The Ranch that come to mind, The Maze, The Rushmore Water Slide, just to name a few, that were seasonal. And I don't understand how, what the value proposition is for this Liberty Land. And I just sort of feel that this is going to be another thing that's going to fall on the backs of the taxpayers. I also want you to know that I ran for state senate, and I knocked over two thousand doors. And the main thing that I heard from people was property tax relief. And I wish that you could have heard some of these people, and how they're just crushed under the debt. People don't even own their homes anymore, really, because the taxes are just getting out of control. And in particular, this one man told me that they were living in their house, and he said, "My wife is over seventy years old. She still has to work to pay our property taxes." And he said, "This isn't just a house. It's our home. And I don't know how we're going to be able to stay here, and I don't know where we're going to go." So I just plead with you to just think about these things. And then the other thing I wanted to say is, we need to stop the reckless spending and do what is best for the constituents in this area. The city needs to run this like a business, not taxpayer handouts for developers, many of who are not even local taxpayers. Most of us, if we want to run a business, we have to go to the bank and get a loan. And this is just, to me, corporate welfare. So I just ask you to think about that. And just think about the people. This is taxation without representation, in my opinion. Thank you for the opportunity.
Lois Ward, followed by Tim Brady.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate the time. My husband was born here, raised here, went through Central High School, School of Mines, and then had to get a job out of state and rescued me from California. We moved back here twenty-five years ago. I've lived here for twenty-five years. And we built a house. In the last seventeen years, the value of that house, according to the assessors, has almost doubled. It's ninety-eight-point-five percent increase in valuation. What that does to my taxes is horrendous. I could, I suppose I could sell it for that, but where would I go? The main thing is that I voiced my concern about the property tax inflationary valuations, and I sent an email to every city councilman that I could get an email address for, according to your city website. I received comments back from a couple or three. And one of the comments I received was, "These TIFs are great, because they're going to bring in lots of sales tax." Okay? But if it's going to bring in sales tax, how about you fund it with sales tax instead of property tax? But then I thought about it, and I went, "Wait a minute. The sales tax fund is called the Vision Fund." So what I'm seeing now is that the things that don't qualify for the Vision Fund are now just being doled out with the property taxes. It's really, really hurting those of us who have lived in homes for many, many years, and now are paying more in our property taxes and insurance. And the insurance goes up, because the valuations of the house tell the insurance company that the house is worth that much more, so they charge you that much more. Our monthly bill to cover just property taxes and insurance is over double what our mortgage was in two thousand. So, and it was a different house, but it was almost the same size. So I'm just asking, please, think about those of us who have to pay those property taxes for things that aren't the streets or the things that are making us, helping us do business. And also, all these businesses that you're bringing in, where are you going to find the employees? Almost every business in town has a "now hiring" sign on it. And there's no employees to fill the businesses we already have. And there's restaurants that have to cut hours, et cetera. So please, think very, very carefully.
Next, Tim Brady, followed by Heather Baxter.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Tim Brady. I'm a business owner here in Rapid City. I own and operate Brady's Skid Steer Services. We are a private fire mitigation and vegetation removal company. We're the guys cutting, chipping, grinding, hauling, burning, doing all of that fuels reduction work. We work direct with Rapid City Fire Department and South Dakota Wildland Fire. I wanted to come here tonight to shine a light on several items regarding the overall wildfire threat and safety of the Rapid City area from a private business perspective. I'm not just here on behalf of my business alone. I'm here on behalf of all the businesses in Rapid and all the residents of Rapid. Because I don't want to see the city burn similar to Colorado Springs, Pacific Palisades. And if it does, it's going to be massively staggering the consequences to our economy and everything. The programs that are held right now, they do a very good job with. But my business has helped complete some of the larger fire mitigation thinning projects and removal stuff around Rapid City, such as Cinnamon Ridge, Cavern Crest, Red Rocks, and other properties throughout the Black Hills. We're very in tune with the conditions and what needs to happen with the vegetation removal around Rapid. Over the last fifteen years, there's been a major effort throughout Rapid City and a major investment through properties to the southwest, west, and northwest of Rapid City. This has been a joint effort in removal of these materials from state, county, city agencies, and private contractors such as myself. This work happened on, we were a big part of making this happen on the ground. So there has been a major investment in all of this. Some of the points that I wanted to touch on are the maintenance, disposal, community outreach, and funding. Maintenance, all of this work, I'm just going to put it, it's like mowing your yard. If you stay up on it, it's not too bad. If you don't stay up on it, it gets really costly, really expensive. Disposal, the disposal fees that the dumps charging for the yard waste fees for commercial, the fire mitigation program and stuff, you're crushing the private guy on that deal. And the city's selling the material anyways. I don't think that it's a needed, a needed deal. And a lot of times, you're kind of breaking the back of the small guy with the pickup and a chainsaw that's doing the work out there, because it brings in a lot of material through those programs. Community outreach, there's talk of a new position at the fire department that...
Time's up. Here, what I can do is, we can have our fire department. I'd love for you to connect with them and then talk through some of your concerns, if that's all right. Thank you. Heather Baxter, followed by Erin Prince. Hi, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Heather Baxter, and as a resident of Rapid City, I believe some TIFs have been an asset to our area, but currently, there's a large amount of abuse on the number of TIFs in Rapid City. In my opinion, after these requests come through planning and zoning, the decision by elected bureaucrats seems to be a done deal based on the recommendations to the council. The people of South Dakota often see companies come in from out of state, even out of the country at times. We remove the sales tax on equipment. We give them millions of dollars as incentives, in other ways as well, all while strapping our taxpayers even more. Look at all our nonprofits who get TIFs. They get multiple tax breaks. Taxpayers pick up the tab, all under the umbrella of economic development. Where's the free enterprise? Why promote only corporate affairs? Large developers, as well as out-of-state companies. I could be completely wrong, but it almost feels like we're picking winners and losers. Do any of you ever ask for proof of audited financial statements during the life of a TIF? Are these TIFs always a net benefit to our community? I would like to see the data on the impact to local EMS services, the increased crime, roads, social services, schools, et cetera, when these developments supposedly, that wouldn't come here otherwise, are given the opportunity to come. I realize it's common belief that if you don't do these TIFs, you may lose the development opportunity, or in some cases, the land that was gifted to the city, and may be taken back if you don't vote in a specific way. It comes across as though Rapid City hasn't figured out a reasonable way to pay for their infrastructure, so they use TIFs to do it. Please keep the will of the people in this community in mind when you're voting on these massive TIFs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Erin, followed by Amanda Beard. Beard?
Thank you all for your time today. Appreciate it. I'm new to the area. And I have witnessed many things. I'm not here to petition, to complain, but there's a lot of things that can be corrected in this community, and most of you guys don't understand or can't relate about what has occurred through the last hundred and sixty years. All of you have been bamboozled. None of you know how banking works. You don't even know what money is. There's money of exchange and money of account. Okay, this all extends from banking. I have a solution for all of you to get all the money possible, because you're worth a lot more than you possibly can imagine. Okay? It's been generational, being abused, being like, your life energy being sucked away. Everybody here is complaining about not having the money. But hold on a sec. The Federal Reserve, it just creates the money. So why are they taxing you? Are you a federal employee? Well, some of you are. But the rest of everybody here is paying federal taxes. They're not federal employees. The definition of citizen means that you're serving. Now, I'm a state citizen. I am serving the Federation. I am serving the United States of America. Everybody here is a citizen, definition of citizen. Well, citizen means to serve. Words, definitions, symbolism, everything matters. And I'd like to work, talk to you guys about resolving some of the issues. We do have a lot of predatory practices with a lot of different agencies, and the capacity of understanding how you're operating and how you're, the context. Because if you're operating in commerce under the Clearfield doctrine, all your agencies have no immunity. But there's no need for anybody arguing. There's no need for anybody trying to attack each other for resources, because there's lots of resources, lots of abundance, just knowing how to balance the books. Okay? Most people weren't taught about how the IRS works, how to do different forms, how to offset, charge, discharge, everything. There's a lot of ways, a lot of people, there's no need for poverty in the United States whatsoever. Okay, there's no need for any of this. And again, I'm here, I've came to the community to come to the Hawkins' aid. It's disgusting. It's been poor-lined, but I don't want to get into that. But I'm here for, I'm here for the community. I really came here to teach people, to educate people. I can prove everything beyond any reasonable doubt and teach people how to properly do banking. Most people don't know the difference between private and public. There's a private-public exchange going on here. Just understanding, I mean, the fifth generation warfare is not about the weapons. It's about indoctrinating a population. Okay? And I really hope to work with you guys and work with the community and be able to help everybody in this situation, because it's unprecedented what has happened. And I would be more than happy to provide education and knowledge.
Next up, Amanda, followed by Tonti Weaver.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I just want to reiterate what a lot of these others have said about the TIFs. And I agree with them that they're not a good thing, and I urge you to vote against them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Tonti Weaver, followed by Jody Frye.
I'm going to take a cue from James and sit.
I'm going to take a cue from James and sit, if you don't mind.
No problem.
Okay. Of course, it's the same song, different verse, but there is a lot of discussion statewide about TIFs, and I think the council is starting to realize why now it was such a major topic during the public forum that CFL held before the mayor, before the city council elections. It does matter to people. And so, with that in mind, there is an East River blog on Substack called "South Dakota Voice," and I really don't even know for sure who writes this blog. But they made the point that $50,000 in 1997 is the equivalent of about $233,000 now. That means young people are under severe financial pressure, and I don't know any young person that has a wage close to that, and very few people who are in their 50s are at that level either. Then, my comment to her was, maybe it's just a coincidence, but those dates align with the expansion of tax increment financing districts into the realm of industrial and economic development, and the accompanying exclusions from local effort for schools. This is the fallout from forced economic development, as opposed to slow and steady and natural growth. TIF abuse is like making a hostage dig their own grave. And that might seem a little dramatic, but we kind of are hostages. We have to pay what our tax bill is. And, you know, I, for one, when I write my check to the Pennington County Treasurer for our homes, for our homes taxes, first and second half, I always write in the margin "estate ransom," because that's what it seems like. We have paid for our house many years ago, but right now, we're paying about the same for taxes and insurance as we did for our house payment. So, I would agree with Karen, who said that it's taxation without representation, because when you take money away from that local effort, it is paid by someone. It is paid by every other taxpayer in the state of South Dakota who cannot vote on these issues or on the people who grant them. So, again, please keep that in mind, this is really an unconstitutional arrangement. And there is no local support for these, for these TIFs. The company that is putting in Liberty Land or wants to, says there's local support, but I don't recall them asking.
All right, Tonchi, thank you. Next up, Beth, or Jody Frye, followed by Beth Hodges.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll just be short and sweet. I want to thank my Senator Taffey Howard and my Representative Heather Baxter for representing District 34 so well, and coming here to talk to you guys about these TIFs that are really out of control, after living through the nightmare of the one of Block 5, where it really affected our business. I would like to encourage my councilmen, Greg Strowman and Kevin Maher, to please consider and listen to what we're saying. We don't need any more tax, or taxpayer money being thrown at these things. One, I had asked, I believe it's Dr. Tamang on Facebook, he's been very vocal in talking with everyone, "Do you even know how much they're going to charge a day for a pass? I mean, is it $110 or, I mean, how much is it going to cost to get into this place?" Because I know the lunches at the hotel next to us, no one's going to go there for $17 to $20 lunches, so that restaurant isn't going to do well. So, I'm frustrated, because like Karen McNeil said, the TIFs are being abused. It is supposed to be for blighted land. Look at Black Hills Energy, got all that land for free. Block 5, all that land for free. It's abusive to taxpayers, and I really hope you guys rethink this, because the construction, one, it would have been nice if something would have been in the paperwork where these people who are getting the TIFs need to buy their products locally. And that wasn't happening either. I think there was a couple of local electricians and things like that, but the products didn't come from in-town, they came from Sioux Falls. So, how did that help us? We lost business for over two years, because the road was closed way longer than what they said it would be. So please consider stopping wasting taxpayer money. Please stop these TIFs. If it's truly blighted land, come to us and ask us what we think. But talk to your constituents, please. Thank you.
Beth Hodges, followed by Greg Block.
Good evening, everyone. I actually live very close to the location of the proposed Liberty Land. I have sent emails to every single one of you. I've received three responses, which I do appreciate them, even if they weren't something that I agreed with. I don't agree with the fact that taxpayers are having to be saddled with all of, all of this extra money when our schools are falling apart, our roads are falling apart. I know it was, in one of the response emails that I had received, it was saying that Seeger is going to be turned into a five-lane road. I don't know if any of you guys have been out on Seeger or Tish. Tish is an absolute disaster. I have to call every month to say, "Hey, this thing's tearing up our cars." But there's not a whole lot of space for it to go any wider, unless you're starting to kick businesses out, or you're going to be putting it right up next to homes. This Liberty Land's going to be right next to two junkyards, I mean, way to show the butt end of Rapid City. It's, the other issue is, on 143rd Avenue, is that road can't drain water. And I have called multiple people within the city, and the city says, "Not our problem, it's the county." I've called the county. County says, "Not our problem, it's the city," because the city put in the road. So whose problem is it? I don't know. And I would really like to not flood every single time we get a large rain event. We flooded twice this year, and it's, I mean, it's putting it on to me now that I have to pay for all of this flooding damage. So, I would really appreciate it if everybody took a second thought on approving this TIF. Again, I'm really hoping not, but, and you know, most people that I've talked to that about this TIF, for every 15 people I've talked to, I have maybe one person that says, "Yes, this is a good idea." So, I don't know, maybe I'm talking to completely different people than y'all are talking to, but most of the people that I've talked to, almost all of them, all of my neighbors, which they couldn't be here today, but almost all of them are all saying, "No, we don't want this." So, thank you for your time.
Next, Greg Block.
Greg Block, as a fellow public servant, I just want to say thank you for your service. I know it's not easy. You've got a lot of, a lot of issues that you need to decide, and I know it's not a simple role. Most of you know me for many years, and yet, you might not know that I was invited to be on the 2030, 2020 Strategy, Vision 2020 Strategy Committee, and I was asked what my objectives would be. And goal number one was promote Rapid City as a faith and family-friendly environment. Goal number two was to create a catchphrase or a soundbite attached to the name of our city that emphasizes our friendly personality. And number three, lobby for some type of theme park for the area closer to the city, possibly north and east of the mall, between Rapid City and Box Elder, or up on Highway 16, close to the town. So I've been thinking about this for a long time when it comes to Liberty Land. I am the fourth legislator here tonight to address you and to encourage you, and just want to remind you that any city government TIFs should be rare, and only when there is a tangible benefit to the average taxpayer, as has been stated several times. They were designed to be used for blighted areas, you know, eyesores, abandoned buildings or havens for illegal activity to incentivize contractors and financiers to improve the value of the area, or make it into a public park, or something that's going to be useful for the entire community. And it's just not fair to the Rapid City taxpayers to give away their tax dollars in TIFs, the hard-earned money that they're presuming that's going to go towards roads and infrastructure and law enforcement. And I just want to encourage you, listen, listen to the voices of the tax, go and knock on some doors. I'm not going to say that you haven't, maybe you have done this, but go and knock on some doors and talk to the people and get their input, since you're spending their money. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to take the podium for three minutes and hand the chair over to President Pettigrew.
First of all, I know the timer's going, just like it is for everybody else. First, I want to say thank you to Rapid City Area Police Department. They do an incredible job, and we want them to know that they have our support. Two, I've heard, you know, what's been said tonight, I know there's going to be a lot of discussion, I will say this, by and large, TIFs have been good for Rapid City. Frankly, Rapid City has done a very good job stewarding these TIFs over time. Some TIFs are better than others, not every one of them even make it for consideration, because we say no, and then occasionally, the council will say no once it's, once it gets to them. But I want to talk a little bit about, I think there's a lot of misperceptions about TIFs. I think that the idea that, that, for example, we're just giving millions, you know, $125 million to one developer to do something, doesn't really tell the whole story. And I want to use an example. How I determine whether a TIF is worthwhile is, what is the public benefit? That's the number one question we should always ask. What is the public benefit? And is it enough of a public benefit that we would freeze the property tax value for a period of time, so that those developments can be made? And then when it's done, what would that value be then? I'm going to give you the example of the Marshall Heights TIF that was recently approved by the city council, also known as the Chick-fil-A TIF. So what is true and not true about that TIF? Well, the TIF, actually, the reason I support it, I want a Chick-fil-A more than anybody else, but that is not the primary reason. That's a side benefit. The chicken sandwich is a side benefit. The primary reason I supported that TIF is because it did three really big things. One, it took a blighted area with a hotel room that is disgusting, needs to be torn down, an old diner, and it is not producing at the levels that it should be, so it's blighted. Two, it needs traffic improvements along that Rushmore Crossing area, while it's not every traffic improvement I wish was done, which, by the way, Rushmore Crossing was done with a TIF, used to be a cow pasture. But it takes infrastructure improvements and traffic improvements around that area, on Luna Avenue, widening things, adding a streetlight, those sort of things. And the third thing that it does is it adds a police precinct to know what drive, it helps us pay for it. So rather than burdening your taxes with providing those needed improvements, it provides another mechanism that we can have a new development pay for those improvements, so that we can relieve those funds to address some of the other serious issues that we have. And so whenever we, that's a really good example. And by the way, the other benefit will then be, the retail development in that space will produce sales tax revenue, which for a city is the primary way that we make money. I will say this, property taxes are way too high. I do believe that we need to look at it, we need property tax relief. But anybody who says, "Let's have property tax relief," but doesn't have a plan to pay for it on the offset, is selling you something. I think sales tax is the way to go. So, my time is up, and I could say more, but thank you.
Glad that last guy's done. Now let's move on to non-public hearing items 2 through 25, and open public comment for items 2 through 20. I have no speaker request forms for those items, so we will close the public comment and move on to consent items 2 through 20. Would the council like to remove any items for separate consideration or approve the balance? Okay, we got a motion by Maher, second by Roberts, to approve items 2 through 20. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to the end of consent items, and we will move on to non-consent items 21 through 25, and open public comment for items 21 through 25. I have no speaker request forms for those items, so we will close the public comment and move on to item 21. First reading of ordinance number 6685, an ordinance amending the Rapid City Municipal Code to prohibit the purchase, sale, or offering for sale of Tylenvetein, I can't ever pronounce that, Tyana, Tylenvetein, thank you, that's it, and related products by adding chapter 8.54 to the Rapid City Municipal Code. Okay, we got a motion by Roberts with a second by Strowman to approve. And, thank you, I was covering his name. Counselor Maher.
Thank you, Mayor. I think our legislators all left, but I was going to challenge them. We're going to pass this in the city to outlaw Tylenvetein. It really needs to be banned at the state level. So I will get ahold of those legislators and ask them to please bring this item to peer. Eight states have a ban on it, and Rapid City's a start, it'll bring some public awareness to this opioid-like drug, which is really currently unregulated in most states. So, thank you.
All right, the motion on the floor is to approve. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 22, request by Advanced Design Engineering and Surveying on behalf of Paradigm Construction LLC for a request to waive the requirement to install sidewalk, corner ramps at the Port Rush/Melbourne intersection as required per 16.16.050 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. All right, we have a motion by Lehman with a second by Evans to approve. Counselor Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I direct a question to Director Fisher?
Short thing.
Oh, I think it's item 22. I believe the original staff recommendation was to deny, I'm just curious what changed, or maybe I'm misremembering this item, but I thought it was to deny it first.
Ms. Fisher, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You are correct. Originally, we thought that it needed to be denied, but we looked at the overall design of it with the Boulevard area, and we reached back out to the ADA Appeals Board. They indicated with this design that ramp was not needed, and so we got on board with the property owners and recommend to approve.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 23, a request by Advanced Design Engineering and Surveying on behalf of Paradigm Construction LLC for a variance to waive the requirement to install sidewalk along Mirfield Drive as required per 1212.08.060 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. All right, we got a motion to acknowledge the withdrawal by Lehman with a second by Roberts. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to item 24. All right. Making sure I'm in the right spot here. A resolution of intent to enter into a lease agreement with Colorado Energy Recyclers LLC pursuant to SDCL 9-12-5.2. The staff recommends the item to be approved. Okay, we got a motion by Seacrest with a second by, was that Bieberdorf? All in favor?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Landine, didn't Ms. Cushman from your office want this item moved in an email, I thought I read?
Looks like there is an item later in the agenda, but is this related? Counselor, or, let's go to the city attorney. You want to chime in again there, Joel? I booted you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's related. I guess I would question, I didn't really work on it, but the issue was with the notification requirements for the lease, not for this agreement. However, I'm assuming this agreement is dependent or says that, you know, we'll agree to lease them the property if, so it is a little contingent on that. So, I see Mr. Ainsley wants to speak.
Yeah, let's have our finance director, Daniel Ainsley, chime in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What ended up occurring is that there was a failure to be able to get the notification in on time to actually hold the public hearing here, and so this is essentially just allowing us to have the resolution published in time for the council to make the actual policy decision on September 2nd.
So, so this item's good, but the later item is the one that needs to be continued?
Needs to be continued.
Good discussion. Thank you, Counselor Lehman, for raising that issue. So the motion on the floor is to approve. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 25, authorize the emergency procurement of a light-duty single axle sanitation truck. Okay, we got a motion by Maher with a second by Lehman and Counselor Evans. The floor is yours.
Okay, I know that this is about a mini garbage truck in order to accommodate the bridge and I think that's good. But we also want to investigate, as I brought up at legal finance, possibility of reinforcing the other lane of the bridge, the newer lane of the bridge, so that a lot of these problems about passage over the top of that are alleviated for the next couple of years. And I just want to make sure, you know, this little garbage truck could be used in other parts of town as well when we're done, so it's not a waste of money. But we can't discount the opportunity to explore other options for that bridge rather than just declaring it unsafe. We could use some money, reinforce those lanes that are newer. Evidently, half the bridge is newer than the rest. And make sure that the community is inconvenienced as little as possible over the period of reconstruction there. So we have to make sure we keep exploring that. Thank you.
Counselor Pettigrew.
Thank you, Jason. I just want to make sure, maybe I missed it, but in the original posting on this from Daniel, I didn't see a dollar amount. I just think the public should know what the truck's going to cost.
Yeah, fair point, Finance Director.
Maybe I missed that, Daniel, but I did not see that dollar amount.
While we're waiting for the Finance Department, we're going to go to Counselor Roberts.
Thank you. Now you're making me worry because I thought I saw that number. I thought it was like 238-ish. And the reason I thought it was that number was because running the numbers on what it would have cost us if we'd have taken a, because we had had somebody that came out and bid on it for, to do it in the private sector. And those numbers compared to what we're paying are almost the same. So whoever did that, thank you. I mean, we are actually getting a garbage truck for what this contract would have cost us. And I know there's been other times in the past where things like this have came in front of us on the council and we have just okayed them without looking into what the actual cost was. You know, one of them that's, that kind of glaring towards me that I can think of in the past was in the 2013 snowstorm, we had rented some huge chippers. I'm sure there's a few people in here that remember that. And the cost of renting them was about, if I remember right, about half of what the cost to own them would have been. So, you know, I mean, and that would have been something if we'd have bought one of them that could have been used in the landfill for decades. So just thinking, whoever put this together and recommended this, kudos to you. I think it was great. Thank you.
All right, let's go to the Finance Director for some further information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and kudos to the Sanitation Department. They have spent a lot of time over the past, I think, two weeks trying to come up with the best solution for the ratepayers for this. We are requesting a purchase of $236,000 for the truck. I do want to make sure that the council's aware that we're also requesting as part of this motion that if tomorrow morning, if that truck is no longer available, it was available a few hours ago, but we don't know, then we're requesting the next best deal, which is 301,656. Just, we're hoping, of course, for the more affordable one, but we are just wanting to make sure that we purchase a truck so we can get to work.
For the public record, because I don't think we've stated it explicitly, Chapel Valley has one way in and out and it's a bridge and it has a weight restriction going on it. Our current garbage trucks to serve our customers and citizens up there are too heavy for that, so we're looking to buy a lighter truck in an emergency situation that has a sidearm to really serve the citizens in that area. So just for the record, just wanted to make sure that was out there. So you would look for that approval of that motion to be for this amount, but up to that? Would you state that up to $2 amount, please, again?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, with a purchase of up to 301,656. Again, our intention is for the $236,000 truck.
Is that okay with the original motion makers? All right, with that, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Now we will move on to the public hearing items 26 through 35 and open the public hearing for items 26 through 35. I do have a couple of speaker request forms for item 35 and we will begin with Tim Johnson. And Tim will be followed by Logan Stephens. Just like before, you have up to three minutes for comment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here today as a hotelier here in Rapid City. I just wanted to get ahead. I know that things can get a little bit sideways with misconceptions and whatnot, but I'm here to voice my support for the bid that you'll be voting on here in just a bit. If implemented properly, they have a major impact, huge ROI for Rapid City with this team right here. And I know you've been in contact and close communications with the sports communication, Sports Commission and all that we have going on. And so this is imperative to its long-term success and keeping it viable and operational. So with that, I would encourage your support for the Sports Commission Hotel Bid Occupancy Tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Stephens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. To echo my colleagues' sentiments here as the general manager of the Doubletree down by the Civic Center, we are very much in support of this hotel bid for the Sports Commission. We see it as an ability to create regular, year-round business, which means regular year-round employment, regular year-round shopping, regular year-round eating. And I think it's just really a great opportunity, not only for our kids, and I'm raising two young children in Rapid City, to have facilities and events and things like that to participate in, but it's great for our visitors and it is great for the entire community. I do really feel that the Sports Commission is a community effort. And as a hotelier, if our hotel bid can help support that, we are very much in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our public hearing items and we will move on to consent public hearing items 26 through 29. Would the council like to make a motion to approve those items? Motion by Roberts, second by Lehman. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar and we will move on to non-consent public hearing items 30 through 35. Item 30, second reading of ordinance number 6677, an ordinance amending Section 17.06 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Renter Associates LLC for Martinez Development LLC for rezoning request from medium-density residential district to light industrial district for property generally described as being located at 865 North Valley Drive. Motion by Seacrest with a second by Evans. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 31, second reading of ordinance number 6678, an ordinance amending Section 17.06 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Renter Associates LLC for Martinez Development LLC for rezoning request from medium-density residential district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located at 865 North Valley Drive. Motion by Lehman, second by Evans. To approve, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 32, authorize Mayor and Finance Director to sign Amendment Number 1 to Memorandum of Understanding for Alternative Fuel Landfill Diversion Program Evaluation Project Number 2803 and CIP Number 51424. The staff has requested to continue this item to the September 2nd, 2025 council meeting. Okay, motion by Seacrest with a second by Lehman to continue this item to the September 2nd, 2025 council meeting. Counselor Evans would like the floor.
Yeah, I sent everybody on the council a document that was mined by the Sustainability Committee concerning a facility similar to this in Minneapolis that actually heats Target Field, the Target Center, all these things, right in the center of the city, produces no pollution whatsoever. Evidently, these things are capable of really reducing the amount of stuff that goes into our landfill, which would extend the years of use for that thing. So I encourage you to look that over. This is a state-of-the-art technology that's coming to us and it might solve several of our problems. So take a look at that and your knee-jerk reaction to burning certain things might go away because you're finding out that this is a new way of getting rid of the waste. And it evidently works. So, thank you.
Very well, thank you. Absolutely, a win-win. So the item on the floor is to continue. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 33, a resolution to enter into, excuse me, a resolution number 2025-09 for a resolution to enter into a lease agreement with Colorado Energies Recyclers LLC. The recommendation's to continue to the September 2nd, 2025 council meeting. All right, motion by Seacrest with a second by Evans. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 34, resolution number 2025-086, a resolution amendment to the comprehensive plan to revise the major street plan by adding a proposed collector's street. And this is requested to move to continue to the September 2nd, 2025 council meeting per the applicant's request. All right, motion by Strowman with a second by Pettigrew. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. 35, hold a public hearing, or excuse me, let me read this over again. CC 081825-04.3, hold a public hearing regarding the proposed Second Hotel Business Improvement District, otherwise known as the bid, and direct staff to prepare an ordinance to implement the Second Hotel bid. The recommendation is to hold the public hearing and direct the staff to prepare an ordinance to establish the Second Hotel bid. Got a motion by Pettigrew with a second by Strowman? All right, all of, Counselor Meyer, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to note, I'll abstain from this item.
Duly noted. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with one abstention from Counselor Meyer. Next, we'll move on to the bill list. First, 36A, a bill list for Main Street Square and/or Visit Rapid City totaling $109,113.11. Counselor Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will abstain from Bill List A.
Duly noted. All right, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Lehman, second by Roberts to approve 36A. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with one abstention from Meyer. 36B, bill list for August 18, 2025, without vision, without Visit Rapid City is, well, actually, we're going to let, Finance Director, you're supposed to be reading these, that's right. Oh yeah, I was doing your job for you.
You can do my job.
Finance Director Daniel Ainsley. Sounds better coming out of your mouth. All right, all in favor? Or wait, do we have a motion? Motion by Seacrest with a second by Evans. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, motion by Lehman, second by Strowman. All in favor? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.